University Board of Trustees is now called to order. Dean Stevenson, would you please give us a prayer, please?
Let us bow. God, we thank you for today. We thank you for this opportunity to serve at this institution. Thank you for this board. We thank you for them giving up their time. We ask that you bless this meeting. In your name we pray. Amen.
Man, thank you. I'd like to ask the cabinet and deans, cabinet members and deans to please stand. I won't call the main, but I want you to see, okay? Also, I would like to introduce new employees that we have. We have a Chief Operating Officer. That is General Jason Evans. We have Assistant Vice President of Customer Relations, Mrs. Jessica Powell. A new Director of Internal Audit, Dr. Renee Forbes-Williams. And also the Assistant Vice President for Design and Construction, Mr. William Radford. Okay, this period again. Okay, all right. So, welcome aboard, and we look forward to great things from each and every one of you. The other thing I'd like to do is if we all just witnessed that dynamic introduction that we had starting this meeting, I would like for the head of the Aristoc... Quiet Press of Band, Dr. Reggie McDonald, would you please come forward? This man has done a Yoma's job. I first met Dr. McDonald several years ago at Harper's Restaurant that was there. But Dr. McDonald, just let me just quickly tell you all, he's got the Grammy under his belt, he's got the CMA present... Participation, and now the White House participation. Dr. McDonald, please just say something for us.
First of all, I would just like to say good afternoon. I am extremely honored to be in front of such a prestigious group of people. And I brought a couple of students. This is De Erica S... Say your last name. Suttif from Birmingham, Alabama. She's the captain of the Sophisticated Ladies. She's an AK, very good student here on campus. Our head drum major was supposed to come, and somehow he locked himself out. He's the head drum major, Joshua Knox. He's from Detroit, Michigan. He just pledged capital, so I think some of that's on his brain right now. And so, I hear you. And so, he's doing, he's doing really well. So, I'm gonna make a couple of comments, but I really want y'all to hear from the students to talk about their experience. First, I want to say that we work for a president that's connected to a lot of people, okay? And a lot of times, we don't realize how connected she is until something like this happened. I'm sitting at home, somehow I missed a call because I have twin five-year-olds, so daddy was doing something. And I received a text message that called me now, time sensitive. And I called her back, and she said, "Did you get an email from the White House?" "No, ma'am. Go back and check your emails." And there it was. And from that point, the ball started to roll. Because of her connections, we got this tremendous opportunity to do what I call educate beyond the classroom. I'm big on that. Because of the clients that we serve, we have to make sure that we give them experiences that go beyond the classroom settings as much as possible so that they are prepared and can interact and not be afraid to do what we've taught them and to excel at a high level. So, thank you, Dr. Glover, for your connections, and thank you for being a visionary, but also thank you for being a leader that will allow, you know, the people that work for you to excel. Because all leaders don't do that. Let me say that, okay? And so, I am extremely grateful for that. I want to thank the board for giving the band some of the things, if not all the things we need. I'm still gonna beg, so that we need to move and do some unique things for our students. When I first got hired at Tennessee State in 2001 as the Associate Band Director, the then-band director challenged me to think big and dream big for our students and not to think about what the ordinary marching band do. And I've made that my business. This was the second time we've been at the White House within seven years. We've done the CMAs, we've done the Grand Ole Opry, we've done a lot of historical things. We did NFL Drafts on it, so... When the Super Bowl come here, you know the band gonna be there, right? We already know it. And so, I just want De Erica to talk a little bit about her experience and how everything evolved. The biggest challenge we had was not performing. We knew the kids were gonna perform well, but this is summer break. A lot of our kids are living in different places throughout the country, so our challenge was to get everybody back on campus, get them somewhere to live, some food, so on and so on. So, VP Allen, thank you. VP Stevenson, thank you. Dr. Johnson, thank you. Because those are the three people I had to reach out to real fast to make things happen. I think we got all the kids on campus May 31st, and they all go home today, actually. And also, we're in the middle of high school band camp. So, we have about 103 kids from all across the nation, eighth through 12th grade here for our high school band camp this week. So, that's still going on too. De Erica?
Good afternoon, everyone. Once again, my name is De Erica Suttif. I am from Birmingham, Alabama. I am a rising slash graduating senior, and I am a... Yeah, senior, public health major. Um, I'm not sure how everyone played their part in us being able to travel to the White House, but thank you all, and however you may have helped. Um, the experience for me was surreal. I feel like us college students like me aren't, you know, who's able to say that they traveled to the White House and performed firsthand for the President and Vice President of the United States of America? Like, many people can't say that, so, yes. So, I am very excited and very grateful that I had this opportunity. So, thank you, everyone, however you have may helped. Um, I hope you, I hope we did you guys proud. So, if you remember back on the video, that was me in the center.
Yeah. I've already told him that was me in the center.
That was me. We traded places for a second. But I'm, I'm very grateful for the experience. I really enjoyed myself in DC. It's my first time in DC, probably the last. But I really enjoyed myself, so thank you, everyone.
And the Vice President was very complimentary. She said she had a few moves, too.
So, in De Erica's comments, that's kind of what I'm alluding to in terms of educating beyond the classroom. This was her first time in DC, and as I'm sure it was many of our students' first time, just like when we went to Los Angeles for the Rose Bowl Parade. A lot of our kids had never been on a plane before, so we had to talk through that procedure and all of those good things. And so, I just can't say thank you enough, just like the Vice President is singing our praises of Tennessee State University and the excellence of Tennessee State University. I actually follow the President on Instagram, so we're on his Instagram page this morning. And so, yeah, we... A lot of people know about Tennessee State, or at least our name is in their mouth right now, and it's all about excellence. So, that's a great thing. So, thank you very much. The band will be traveling a lot this fall. We've got some information from Notre Dame, so we will be there. They've extended us more than five minutes. Normally, visiting bands only get five minutes, but the aristocrats got more. So, we'll be in Notre Dame on September 2nd, so we're looking forward to seeing all of you.
Dr. McDonald, again, we want to thank you for everything that you've done.
Yes, ma'am.
High excellence, just awesome. The other thing, want to make note that the national coverage has been awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for that.
I think I've done more interviews. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, and we really appreciate that. Also, I just want to make one note that I want to thank Dr. Glover also for being able to get the magnificent Oprah Winfrey here for commencement address, and she was very specific in her comments that the only reason she came was because Dr. Glover threatened her. No, because Dr. Glover continued to ask her to come. Between the two of you, you have definitely put us on the map, and we thank both of you. And thank you, young lady, for your part.
And thank Kelly Sharp for that P.O.
Yes, yes, Ms. Sharp. Thank you so much, okay? All right, as you will note in your board materials for today's board meeting, we have several items on the agenda today. We look forward to addressing several significant matters of importance to this board and the institution's evolution and success. The next item listed in your agenda is the Roll Hall Declaration of a Quorum. At this time, we need to call the rolls. Secretary Pelleton, please call the roll.
Chair Cole.
Aye, here.
Trustee Kribill. Trustee Andre Johnson. Trustee Bill Johnson. Trustee Lewis. Trustee Martin. Trustee McKenzie. Trustee Pennick. Trustee Walker. Trustee Wimberly. We have a quorum.
Okay, the quorum has been declared. Board members, if you cannot hear us speak to the other board members, please state so now. For each board member participating electronically, please identify any individuals who are present in the location from which you are participating. The first action item on the agenda is approval of the Consent Agenda Items, the minutes of the March 16th, 2023 Board Meeting, Audit Committee Meeting, Finance and Budget Committee Meeting, Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee Meeting, and Executive Committee Meeting, the November 7th, 2022 Housing Committee Meeting, and the January 10th, 2023 Housing Committee Meeting. You have in your June 15th, 2023 board materials, the minutes for each of these meetings. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Item?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. I move to approve the Consent Agenda Items as contained in the board materials for the June 15th, 2023 Board Meeting. Oh, well, we got the second. Okay, in a discussion, hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items as contained in the board materials for June 15th, 2023 Board Meeting. Secretary Pelleton, please call the roll.
Chair Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Kribill.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Pennick. Trustee Walker.
Aye.
Okay, the motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is the election of the Board Chair. At this time, I would like to open the floor for nominations for Board Chair.
Chair Cole, I'd like to nominate Dr. Cole to serve as Chair for another two-year term.
Chair Cole, okay. Chair Cole is nominated. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, the question is on nomination of Chair Cole to be re-elected Chair of the Board. Secretary Pelleton, please call the roll.
Chair Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Kribill.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the motion is approved. Thank you for volunteering, Ms. Martin, Trustee Martin.
Thank you for serving.
Thank you to the other board members for, and all board members for your vote of confidence, and I will work very hard to not disappoint you in any manner as I continue the next two years. The next item on the agenda is the election of the Board Vice Chair. At this time, I would like to open the floor for nominations for Board Vice Chair. Okay, I nominate Trustee Pam Martin to serve as Vice Chair for another two-year term.
Second.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, the question is on the nomination of Trustee Martin to be re-elected Vice Chair of the Board. Secretary Pelleton, please call the roll.
Chair Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Kribill.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
Aye.
Okay, the motion is approved.
Dr. Walker.
Congratulations, Trustee Martin, on your reelection. Um, the next item on the agenda is the appointment at-large Executive Committee Members. Pursuant to the Board's Committee of the Board Policy, the Board's Executive Committee is comprised of the Board Chair, the Board Vice Chair, and at least one at-large voting member elected by the Board. Members of the Executive Committee serve for a term of two years. Currently, Trustee Lewis and Walker serve as at-large members of the Executive Committee by Trustee Lewis's service as Committee Chair, and Trustee Walker's service as the most recent former Board Chair. As I noted in today's Executive Committee Meeting, we are at an important juncture for the Board, and our committees have been focused on ensuring accountability and board engagement. I want to maintain the momentum the committees have achieved in carrying out their respective charges, so I move to appoint Trustee Lewis and Trustee Walker to serve another two-year term on the Executive Committee. They have served effectively and admirably on the Board, as well as being productive and important members of the Executive Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
In a discussion, hearing none, the question is on the motion to appoint Trustee Lewis and Walker to serve, to each to serve another two-year term on the Executive Committee. Secretary Pelleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Kribill.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
Okay, the motion is approved. Congratulations, Trustee Lewis and Walker, on your reappointment to the Executive Committee. I know that you would do a fantastic job, and I look forward to working with you on the committee. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the reappointment of the Audit Committee Members. Pursuant to the Board's Committees of the Board Policy and State Law, the Board established an Audit Committee in 2017. The current members of the Audit Committee are myself, Trustee McKenzie, and Trustee Pennick. The Audit Committee Members serve a two-year term. To ensure compliance with state law and the Board Audit Committee Charter, the Board must approve the Audit Committee Members. I am recommending the reappointment of the current members of the Audit Committee, Trustee Cole, Trustee McKenzie, and Trustee Pennick, to each serve another two-year term on the Audit Committee. These individuals have worked closely with me and have served admirably to carry out the important duties of the Audit and Oversight role during our service on the Audit Committee, including important matters that have come before the Audit Committee over the course of the last year. I move for the current members of the Audit Committee to serve on the Audit Committee for another two-year term. Is there a second?
Second.
In a discussion, hearing none, the question is on the motion to reappoint the current members of the Audit Committee to serve on the Audit Committee for another two-year term. Secretary Pelleton, please call the roll.
Chair Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Kribill.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
Okay, the motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the reappointment of the Audit Committee Chair.
Chair Cole, pursuant of the Board's Committees of the Board Policy and State Law, the Board has approved the composition of the Audit Committee. To ensure compliance with state law and the Board Audit Committee Charter, the Board must approve the Audit Committee Chair. I am recommending, recommending the reappointment of Trustee Cole to serve another one-year term as the Chair of the Audit Committee. Trustee Cole has been a committed and effective Chair of this very important Audit Committee. I move to appoint Trustee Cole to serve as Chair of the Audit Committee for another one-year term.
Is there a second?
Second.
In a discussion, hearing none, the question is on the motion to appoint Trustee Cole to serve as Chair of the Audit Committee for another one-year term. Secretary Pelleton, please call the roll.
Chair Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Kribill.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
Motion is approved. As we discussed in committee meetings today, we felt that it was very important that we maintain the current structures of the committees and the chairs for, um... Due to the fact that we have some very important issues that we're dealing with and handling, as you've been made aware at the last board meetings, and we do not want to lose momentum. We're making great progress, and we want to keep going forward. So, again, I thank each and every one of you that has agreed to serve with me during this term, and I appreciate what you have done and what you will do. The next item on the agenda is the deployment of the Student Trustee. Pursuant to the Focus Act, a Tennessee State University student shall serve as a non-voting student member of the Board. The Board shall appoint the non-voting student member to serve a one-year term. In preparing for the Board's appointment of the Student Trustee for the 2023-2024 fiscal year, pursuant to the institution's Student Trustee Recommendation Process, the Tennessee State University Student Government Association solicited and conducted a preliminary review of the candidates and forwarded three candidates for further consideration. The Board Secretary then met with the final candidates and shared his thoughts with President Glover on the candidates. President Glover conducted interviews of the recommended candidates. At the conclusion of the recommendation process, President Glover decided to recommend the reappointment of Mr. Sean Wimberly to serve another term as a student trustee. Mr. Wimberly will be a senior in the Fall 2023 Semester. He is pursuing a Bachelor of Agricultural Science degree in agribusiness. Trustee Wimberly has been an important member of the Board, bringing a key student perspective to the Board's discussion on a number of matters, including housing, scholarship, and enrollment-related issues. I move to appoint Mr. Sean Wimberly to serve another one-year term as student trustee on the TSU Board of Trustees. Is there a second?
Second.
In a discussion, hearing none, the question is on the motion to appoint Sean, Mr. Sean Wimberly to serve a one-year term as student trustee on the TSU Board of Trustees. Secretary Pelleton, please call the roll.
Chair Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Kribill.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Walker. Seven ahs.
The motion is approved. I want to publicly thank Mr. Wimberly for the work that he has done. He's been a tremendous asset to the Board, having no fear to bring forth his comments, suggestions, and we have learned a lot from him during this particular process. So, it gives me great pleasure that you did a reappoint, Mr. Wimberly. Mr. Wimberly, would you like to make a few comments on your appointment?
Absolutely. First, I want to say, um, thank you, Chair Cole, for those nice words. Um, and thank you to the Board for my reappointment. I look forward to working with you all for my last year here at TSU. Thank you.
Last year, okay. Thank you, Mr. Wimberly. I got that part. The Board looks forward to your, sir, the Board looks forward to your continued service on the Board, and the Board Committee Matters. Um, the next item on the agenda is the Audit Committee Report. As the Audit Committee Chair, I will report the actions and other items from today's Audit Committee Meeting. The Audit Committee met today to act on two items, discuss or receive reports on four items, and go into executive session to discuss matters deemed confidential under state law. The Audit Committee voted to recommend to the full Board the approval of the March 16th, 2023 Audit Committee Meeting Minutes and the approval of the Fiscal Year 24 Audit Plan. In addition, the Audit Committee heard reports on the Audit Office's audit activities, internal and external audit matters, the Audit Office's internal quality assessment, and a review of outstanding audit issues. Uh, as I stated, the Audit Committee voted to recommend to the full Board the approval of the Fiscal Year 2023-24 Audit Plan. You have it in your June 15th, 2023 board material. On behalf of the Audit Committee, I move to approve the Fiscal Year 2023-24 Audit Plan as contained in the board materials for the June 15th, 2023 Board Report. Is there a second?
Second.
In a discussion, hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the Fiscal Year 2023-24 Audit Plan as contained in the board materials for the June 15th, 2023 Board Meeting. Secretary Pelleton, please call the roll.
Chair Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Kribill.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
Okay, so the motion is approved. That concludes the Audit Committee's report. The next item on the agenda is the Finance and Budget Committee Report. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. We do need to make, and thank you, Dr. Glover. The Audit Committee voted... First, let me say, those of you that are, that are, that are electronically participating, we also encourage you to attend trustee meetings. It is not virtual in terms of seeing, but you can hear. That's where the work is done. A lot of work done in committees, and I appreciate all those committees that are there. But in one of the committees, in the Audit Committee, as a fact, the Audit Committee voted to recommend to the full Board the approval to engage an external CPA firm, either a Big Four or a national firm, to audit the 630 2022 Financial Statements of Tennessee State University. Is there a second on it?
Yeah, so you voted to recommend to the full Board, and so, yes, we just get a second and then bring money.
I'll second it.
Okay, so, um, Dr. Glover.
Call the roll. Chair Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Kribill.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
Motion approved. Thank you, Dr. Glover. That's a very critical piece of the work that we did do. Uh, the next, um, item on the agenda is the Finance and Budget Committee Report. The next item on the agenda, the Finance and Budget Committee Report. The Chair recognized Finance and Budget Committee Chair, Trustee Lewis, who will report the action and information items from today's Finance and Budget Committee Meeting.
The Finance and Budget Committee met today to act on five items and receive reports on five items. The Finance and Budget Committee voted to recommend to the full Board the approval of the March 16th, should be 16th, 2023 Finance and Budget Committee Meeting Minutes, the approval of the Fiscal Year 2024 Tuition and Mandatory Fees Increase, the approval of the Fiscal Year 23 Estimated Budget, the approval of the Fiscal Year 24 Proposed Budget, and the approval of the Fiscal Year 24 Capital Construction Plan Addendum. Additionally, President Glover and her team provided reports and updates on the university budget, capital plan, and development update, finance and budget report, report on student scholarships and enrollment, and a housing committee report. The Finance and Budget Committee also voted to recommend to the full Board the approval of the Fiscal Year 2023-2024 Tuition and Mandatory Fees Increase of 2.83%. You have in your June 15th, 2023 board materials information for this agenda item. Please note that in accordance with Tennessee Tuition, Transparency, and Accountability Act, the Board Policy 006, the proposed increase was posted to the Board website at least 15 days prior to our meeting. 15 days prior to our meeting. The members of the public were given the opportunity to submit comments on the tuition and fees proposed increase. The Finance and Budget, the Finance and Budget considered the appropriate factors as set forth in Board Policy 006 in recommending to the full board approval and the proposed 2.83% increase in tuition and mandatory fees. On behalf of the Finance and Budget Committee, I move to approve the Fiscal 2023-2024 Tuition and Mandatory Fee Increase of 2.83% as contained in the board material for June 15, 2023. Is there a second?
Second.
In a discussion, hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the Fiscal, uh, 2023-24 Tuition and Mandatory Fee Increase of 2.83% as contained in the board materials for the June 15, 2023, a board meeting. Pursuant to the board's bylaws, this agenda item recall, uh, requires a roll call vote. Secretary Penleton, please call the roll.
Chair Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Corbill.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trusty McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
The motion is approved.
The Finance and Budget Committee also voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the Fiscal Year 2023 Estimated Budget. You have in your June 15, 2023 board materials information for this agenda item. Are there any comments or discussions at this time? On behalf of the Finance and Budget Committee, I move to approve the Fiscal Year 2023 Estimated Budget as contained in the board material for the June 15, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
In a discussion, hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the FY '23 Estimated Budget as contained in the budget material for the June 15, 2023 board meeting. Pursuant to the board's bylaws, this agenda item requires a roll call vote. Secretary Penleton, please call the roll.
Chair Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Corbill.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trusty McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
The motion is approved.
The Finance and Budget Committee also voted to recommend to the full board approval of Fiscal Year 2024 Proposed Budget. You have in your June 15, 2023 board material information for this agenda item. On behalf of the Finance and Budget Committee, I move to approve the Fiscal Year 2024 Proposed Budget as contained in the board materials in the June 15, 23 board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
In a discussion?
Yes, if I can. Um, I, I'd like to, uh, thank, uh, Doug Allen, uh, and President Glover, as well as the board for the nearly 7% increase in the combined instruction, research, and academic support elements within our budget. So thank you as moving us towards the 50% or more target towards instruction. So thank you so much.
Great, and thank you for bringing that point out. Uh, hearing none, the question is, I mean, entertaining that comment, the question is on the motion to approve the FY '24 Proposed Budget as contained in the board materials for the June 15, 2023 board meeting. Pursuant to the board's bylaws, the agenda item requires a roll call vote. Secretary Penleton, would you please call the roll?
Chair Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Corbill.
Aye.
Trustee John, Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trusty McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
The motion is approved.
Last one for us. The Finance and Budget Committee also voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the Fiscal Year 2024 Capital Construction Addendum. You have in your June 20, June 15, 2023 board materials information for this agenda item. On behalf of the Finance and Budget Committee, I move to approve FY '24 Capital Construction Addendum as contained in the board materials for the June 15, 2023 board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
In a discussion, hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the FY '24 Capital Construction Plan Addendum as contained in the board materials for the June 15, 2023 board meeting. Secretary Penleton, please call the roll.
Chair Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Corbill.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trusty McKenzie.
Aye.
The, uh, motion is approved.
Chair Cole, this concludes the Finance and Budget Committee Report.
Thank you, Trustee Lewis, and other members of the Finance and Budget Committee for your service on the committee and for your continued service on the committee.
You are welcome.
The next item on the agenda is the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee Report. The chair recognizes the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee Chair, Trustee Martin, to report on the action item and other items from today's Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee Meeting.
Thank you, Chair Cole. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee met today to consider and vote on three agenda items and to receive reports on four other agenda items. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the March 16, 2023 Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee Meeting Minutes, the approval of the 2023-2024 Tenure and Promotion Recommendations, and the approval of an academic program, the MS in Business Data Analytics. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee also received reports on SACS-CLC review matters, academic affairs, the student housing plan, and student affairs. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the 2023-2024 Tenure and Promotion Recommendations. Information pertaining to this agenda item is contained in board materials for the June 15, 2023 board meeting. On behalf of the Academic Affairs Committee, I move to approve the 2023-2024 Tenure and Promotion Recommendations as contained in board materials for the June 15, 2023 board meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
In a discussion?
I'd like to thank the board for recognizing, recognizing the excellence on the part of the faculty in the preparation for promotion and tenure.
Thank you. Hearing none, I mean, entertaining that comment, the question is on the motion to approve the 2023-24 Tenure and Promotion Recommendations as contained in the board material for the June 15, 2023 board meeting. Secretary Penleton, please call the roll.
Chair Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Corbill.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trusty McKenzie.
Aye.
The motion is approved.
The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee also voted to recommend to the full board the approval of a new academic program, the MS in Business Data Analytics. On behalf of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee, I move to approve the new academic program, the MS in Business Data Analytics as contained in board materials for your June 15, 2023 board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
In a discussion, hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve a new academic program, MS in Business Data Analytics as contained in the board material for the June 15, 2023 board meeting. Secretary Penleton, please call the roll.
Chair Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Corbill.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trusty McKenzie.
Aye.
The motion is approved.
Chair Cole, that concludes my report.
And thank you, Trustee Martin, and other members of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee for your great work on behalf of the board. And Dr. Glover, did you have an update you'd like to give us?
I do. This was, information was not available at the, during the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs report. So I wanted to, uh, say openly, uh, SACS-CLC, uh, last December, uh, voted to, well, December a year ago, uh, TSU's, uh, to receive our tenure reaffirmation. And then they asked us to submit a monitoring report. And so the monitoring report, and then it was the second monitoring report, was due in December, for, uh, and a vote to be taken in December of 2023. We were able to get the information to them, and the, the SACS's meeting, they met today. And I got word from the SACS team that they have taken, they no longer need a monitoring report from TSU. They've accepted information we sent them. And it will probably be announced sometime tomorrow or over the weekend. I thought that was good news, so we don't have any more monitoring with SACS-CLC right now.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thanks, many thanks to Dr. Melton and Dr. Anderson for leading this, and also to our consultant, uh, Dr. Silver, and to the whole faculty and team that worked with this. We appreciate everybody, staff of the staff too. So thank you all for allowing me to make that announcement.
On behalf of the board, I'd also like to, uh, echo our appreciation for all that you've done. And Mr. Lewis, I think got answered your question from earlier.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, the next item on the agenda is the Executive Committee Report. As the Chair of the Board and Chair of the Executive Committee, I will report the action and information items from today's Executive Committee Meeting. The Executive Committee met today to discuss and vote on one action item and hear reports or updates on four items. The Executive Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the March 16, 2023 Executive Committee, um, Meeting Minutes. The Executive Committee also heard a report on board committee assignments, board resolution items, a personnel update, and a report from Secretary Penleton. This concludes the Executive Committee Report. The next item on the agenda is a report on the progress on the board's resolution action item. You can do that down here. I won't do it now.
Let's do it. Okay. That, Madam Chair, that's a part of the president's report. Would you like me to just, my report?
No, uh, I think that what we need to do is take the same approach we took in the committee meeting so that those that are, uh, uh, joining us electronically will have a complete, uh, indication of where we are on the memorandum that was presented to the hearing committee, uh, that I signed off on presenting to the hearing committee. So yes, I want to make sure that we do address the items if you'll just bear with us as we go through this. Uh, we're dealing with responses to the board resolution governing controls report on Tennessee State University's operations. Uh, the first item, TSU Board of Trustees is committed for actively engaging in an enhanced oversight of TSU's operational and fiscal, uh, practices, including working more closely with TSU's management in operational and fiscal area.
So our response is, since the inception of the TSU Board of Trustees, the board is, uh, has always taken an active role in the oversight of operations of TSU. However, at the March board meeting, the, the board, the, the board resolved to take even more active role in TSU operations and increases oversight of operational and fiscal practices as required.
Okay, and, uh, board members, please bear with me, but it's, this is just that important that we need to make sure that those, uh, attending electronically have a full understanding of where we are, uh, on this resolution. Item two, the TSU Board of Trustees, Executive Committee will examine the board's current committee structure to ensure the appropriate number and focus of its committees and provide recommendations to the full board if warranted.
So the board examined the committee structure of the board, and you, and the board has determined that there will be some additional considerations at the board session that's going to take place in September of this year. You had previously established a housing committee at the board that meets regularly and brings forth recommendations for improvement, including today.
Yes, and that housing committee has been very active. You want to thank them for their work. The next item, please. To further strengthen the board's overall effectiveness, the board will continue to work with the Association of Governing Boards, universities, and colleges, including its self-assessment process, to enhance the board's operational effectiveness.
The Association of Governing Boards, AGB, was engaged by TSU to look at our board government's policies, look at our practices, to assess the overall effectiveness, and to identify areas where we could improve it, where the board could improve, or it can enhance the effectiveness. If you recall, AGB was the, 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 the organization that was previously engaged by T-HAC when it, we first started, first established, uh, the local governing institution. So she, uh, the lead person, Carol Cartwright, concluded based on information she had gathered during the review that this board is operating effectively and in alignment with good governance practice. I shared that with GovOps Committee, uh, during the hearings. And that's what the report concluded, was a recommendation developed by the consultant to provide the board with suggestions for achieving the goal of just elevating its effectiveness. So the board chair has scheduled a session with AGB for the board members on September 13th, the day before our September 14th board meeting. So it's going to include, it will include a follow-up to the items that's contained in the AGB report.
Yes, sir.
I just have one question. Did I understand you to say that you shared that with the Government Operations Committee?
I did, I shared.
Is that for the state of Tennessee?
Yes, when we had the GovOps, um, hearing earlier this year.
All right, thank you. That's what I needed to know.
I shared that conclusion with them.
That conclusion was shared
Yes.
with them.
Yes.
So therefore they know.
Yes, and it was shared with other committees too.
That's what I need to know.
And there's been a number of items added to the meeting that will be held on September 13th, which, uh, I feel will be a very progressive, uh, meeting, and we'll make sure that we reiterate to the appropriate individuals the things that, um, in that nature of Mr. Lewis that have been completed.
Thank you.
Uh, the TSU Board of Trustee hereby directs the TSU administration to provide an annual scholarship plan to the board and commencing the board's June 20, 23rd meeting, present reports at the board's regular meeting pertaining to the number of value of all scholarships offered and the number of science scholarship access that's offered, notwithstanding the fact that a scholarship presentation will be made at the March 20, 23 meeting. The TSU administration shall ensure that it provides a copy of the annual scholarship plan to the Tennessee Education Commission for the academic years 23, 24, and 24, 25.
So we did, the administration provides a scholarship plan for the board approval in March 16th board meeting, and it included a scholarship plan in this board material for this meeting also. So we're going to continue to provide updated information. We're going to provide the scholarship plan to T-HAC before the Fall 2023 Semester.
Okay, and that was a very detailed report that was presented to the board, and that report will be submitted, um, so that we're in time with, with the reporting. Is that correct, Dr. Gl-? Okay. Uh, item five, the TSU Board of Trustees directs the TSU management to provide housing application, enrollment application data to the board, commencing at the board's June 20, 23 meeting, and thereafter at its March, June, and September board meetings, notwithstanding the fact that an enrollment data report will be made at the March 20, 23 meeting. Uh, the TSU management shall also provide a copy of said housing and enrollment application data to the Tennessee Higher Education Commission for the academic years 23, 24, and 24, 25, and to the State Building Commission up on request.
So we provide the housing application data as well as enrollment application and the classification data in the materials for this June 15, 20, 23 meeting.
The TSU Board of Trustees directs the TSU management to provide enrollment classification data to the board, commencing at the board's June 20, 23 meeting, and thereafter it is March, June, and September board meetings, notwithstanding the fact that an enrollment presentation, uh, will be made at the, or was made at the March 20, 23 meeting.
So I want you to break down the enrollment classification data. Uh, this is as of June 13th. For, we have freshmen, 1,612, who this is, who registered already. We have freshmen, 1,612, who, this is, who registered already. The others, this does not include those who we send an offer to, the scholarships, only those who registered right now. Sophomores, 1,576, juniors, 689, seniors, 669, the transfers and readmits and others, 62. So the total undergrad enrollment as of June 13th was 4,608. The graduate enrollment is 433. The total enrollment as of June 13th is 5,041. I did check that number earlier today. There was 5100, it has changed, it's 51 around 5150 now.
And that will be a continuously evolving number.
Yes.
The TSU Board of Trustees is committed to ensuring that TSU Management has sufficient and appropriate personnel to operate TSU in a productive and efficient manner. And to that end, hereby directs President Glover to conduct, conduct a review of personnel, including but not limited to organizational structure, performance, and staffing within units, and present a Personnel Data Act Plan, which shall include a plan of action for filling all vacant and interim positions to the Board at its June 2023 Meeting.
So the, we have the newly hired Chief Operating Officer who will work with the President and other cabinet-level personnel to conduct this personnel review. It will include organizational structure, staffing, and performance. He'll take the lead in drafting the Personnel Action Plan that you, that you directed us to do, in consultation also with other cabinet-level personnel. So we have some interim positions that we want to address. At the deans level, the academic deans, there were six interim deans, and there are now three interim deans. We, and there are, there are active searches now for two of those remaining three interim deans. There's an active search for the Business School Dean and a search for the Engineering Dean and Business School Dean. We decided to, to delay it until after the Business School has its accreditation meeting this fall, the visit, not meeting, accreditation visit this fall. Then Engineering Dean, we're in the process of interviewing them now. And so the department chairs, there were nine interim department chairs, and eight of those nine have now been filled. They are permanent chairs. And for the Associate Assistant Deans, there were five Associate Assistant Deans, and all five of those have been filled. So we're working to remove the interim position, interim for their titles and fill those positions.
Item eight, and as I read this, I am not changing the tense. I'm reading it exactly as it was presented to the Hearing Committee. The TSU Board of Trustees further directs President Glover to retain in an expeditious manner a Chief Operating Officer, Director of Construction Management, or similar title position, and conduct an in-depth review of the Enrollment Management Operations.
So Jason Evans, we introduced him earlier, was hired as Chief Operating Officer. And he'll begin his employment all around June 23rd, 2023. It may be a little later, I'm not sure. Mr. Will Rafford was hired as Director, I think it's not Director, he's Assistant Vice President of Construction Management. He, he started his form on May 1st. And Ms. Jessica Powell is Assistant Vice President for Customer Relations. She started her form earlier this month.
The TSU, let me ask one question. Are we submitting responses to this to, to legislators or anything?
We can discuss how we plan to.
Well, how are you planning to do it? Just please correct that title in the previous section.
I will do that.
Okay. The TSU Board of Trustees directs TSU Management to present to the Finance and Budget Committee for its prior approval specified financial budget changes that exceed 10%, including scholarships, and directs TSU Management to present to the Board for its approval of policy consistent with this directive.
The Vice President of Business Finance, we're just going to continue to work and do the necessary planning. Did we skip one? Okay. The Vice President of Business Finance has been directed to request approval for any expenditure that meets or exceeds 10% of the approved budget effective the budget starts next year, next month. Any adjustments beyond this threshold will have to be reviewed by the President or the COO prior to the request for the approval. And any adjustments that will be submitted to the, will have to be submitted to the Board at the next meeting as an agenda item. If there's any emergency requests, as warranted, which we doubt, the Board Chair will communicate that to the Board and obtain approval. We're also working on the policy, and we're going to add to this that the policy will include a level of materiality for, for approval.
Item 10, the TSU Board of Trustees, in concurrence with the Controllers' Report, shall take all appropriate measures, including having its Board Special Committee on Housing, work closely and expeditiously with TSU Management to add at least two new residence halls to the university's housing inventory.
So we'll continue to do the necessary planning and to work with TBR and the State Architect to include the two new residence halls on the agenda for consideration by the State Building Committee, Commission. We're hoping it will be on a commission on the agenda for next month. And we're just excited that we have the TBR staff and others who've been assigned to help execute this process.
Item 11, the TSU Board of Trustees hereby directs the TSU Management to provide, for at least the next two fiscal years, a report at each Board Meeting addressing universities' practices and responsiveness regarding student-related communications, including in the areas of enrollment, housing, and financial aid.
The Communications Plan is represented today. It was a partial plan, and the rest will be presented at the ensuing meeting. Then, so the new Office of Customer Relations was established, and the staff were four individuals, and Assistant Vice President for Customer Relations and her team will assist by providing a more centralized approach to just ensure the students and parents receive timely responsive information. We've also retained an outside Public Relations firm. Take that off while I see it.
Okay, item 12, the TSU Board of Trustees, through its respective Board Committees, shall monitor and review adherence to the directives and matters contained in this resolution, and directs TSU's Management to present a report at its quarterly meetings updating the Board on TSU's adherence to the directives contained in this resolution.
Thank you. That's precisely what we're doing. We, we went through the report, and we, not the report, well, the report, and this resolution that the Board presented, and we take, we took each one of the resolution items, and made sure we present a report today to show that we are adhering to the Board's Resolution Items, just so then hopefully that will assist in monitoring how we are responding to the Controllers' Report.
And the Board has committed to the, providing the resources necessary so that we can have the adequate staffing that we need to get these matters done. And as you can see from the report that has been presented, this is an evolving status report in terms of, there are items that the Board request in order for us to be more fiscally sound as we go through the reports during the meeting. So thank you for your tolerance.
Thank you.
On that. Also, I fail to, I fail to recognize, as much as he's contributing, we sincerely appreciate it. Dr. Johnson, Dr. Bill Johnson, was reappointed as the Faculty Trustee, and we appreciate all the work that you've done, and glad to have you with us.
Thank you, it's a pleasure.
Charge it to my head, not my heart, okay? All right. The next item on the agenda is a report on the TSU Communications Plan. Chair recognizes President Glover, who will provide information regarding this agenda item.
Thank you. I'm going to call on Kelly Sharp, who's Associate Vice President for Communication and Public Relations, to present.
Thank you, President Glover. Chair Cole and Trustees, good afternoon. You received a draft of the Student Communication Policy in your manual for review, and this document is still under development as I receive input from the President's executive team, the Campus Communications Team, and also unit directors, including AVPs of the units that were a part of this. And I'll be working with the AVP of Customer Service, Customer Relations as well, to make sure that this is a very comprehensive plan, and the implementation will go as we would desire for it to, to get the outcome that we'd like. We will have a final document for your review in the September meeting. I would also like to acknowledge the work of the Committee. They've been working over the last two months. They include our two student representatives, Trey Cunningham and Veriana Jefferson. Also, from the academic side, we have Dr. Diatra Young and Dr. Kamari Gundy from the College of Education, and Dr. Diatra Young from the College of Agriculture. And then from the units, we represent Enrollment Management, the Bursa's Office, and Residence Life that worked on this policy, Emmanuel Freeman, Kristen Naylor, and Andrea Montgomery. Again, these were the units that were outlining the Controllers' Report, and they were, played a crucial role in this policy that's in your handbook. The Student Communication Policy will also serve as the blueprint for subsequent policies for faculty and staff when it comes to communication, as well as internal and external audiences that we serve. The student policy also leads to a broader aspect of all communications, one just strengthening our communication. We have regular meetings, and communication meetings with the unit heads. I talk with VP Allen, Dean Stevenson, Enrollment Management at the time, AVP Izzard, on a very frequent basis, talking about the topics that were in the Controllers' Report. How do we go about strengthening the communication to students? They have representatives that forward me documentation. I review the documents. I revise the documents, and they can attest to that. I revise the documents. To make sure, again, that we told lawmakers and what we told you, that we want our messaging to be concise, clear, and understanding that our students, they may not take the time to comprehend or read things well. So we want to make sure that our messaging is clear and concise and to the point. This draft of the Communication Policy for Students, like I said, will serve as the blueprint as we enhance policy to include faculty and staff communication. The current campus communication team that worked on this will be expanded over the next few months as we look to do a full-out survey to all the registered students for the Fall to ask them about communications and how we're communicating to them, and the best ways to do that. And that's also outlined in your plan there. One of the things that did take a hit for us was our strengthening our brand, and that's one of the things that we're working on as well. And the immediate action that we did to that, that I'll be working with the Division of Customer Relations with the student policy, but customer service, that is our brand. I think a lot of times people associate what they see on television, which is true, what they see in the media is a major part of our brand, and it can be. But how we make people feel, how they feel about us when they visit us, talk to us on the phone, that is a substantial amount, or plays an important role as part of our brand. So I'll be working with the Customer Service Division to make sure that we have phone etiquette training, also the Student Communication Plan as well. As it relates to generating news for TSU, several units have designated communications personnel that serve as a liaison to my department, University of Public Relations and Communications, that division. Staff also have assigned BEATs to these units as well, and they make BEAT calls to find out the latest information. I found out a lot of information in Cabinet as well. And we also call and have emails. There's a direct correlation between the units from my departments and to them. On a daily and even weekly basis, we communicate to media outlets this past year, and going on the trend that we have, we probably send about 115 to 130 news releases annually to outlets on, that's local, regional, and national, print, digital. And one of the other things that we're looking to do to help strengthen our brand is enhance the distribution of what we have, what we do, what we send out to you. I'm hoping, I'm sending out these documents to you, when I pass these out. I'm hoping that you receive these as Board Members, the TSU Today, and other things that we send out to you. So this is just some of the things that we're doing to enhance our communications. Okay, well, don't hand them out. I'll email them to you. But I'm hoping that you're getting these, getting this information, either as alerts or communications from you. So that's in a nutshell, some of the things that we're doing as it relates to strengthening communication with this policy. And we look forward to getting feedback from all the parties mentioned, so we can get it implemented, get it before everyone that's a part of this, and have it for you at the September meeting.
And thank you so much for, thank you so much for agreeing to accept the additional responsibilities that were presented to you today. We sincerely appreciate that. Again, once again, I want to thank you for the tremendous national attention that was obtained for the Aristocretus Ban.
Thank you.
Dr. Glover, before I go further, do you have something, do you have another short report you'd like to?
Well, my, we have one more.
No, I'm not going to do it now. I'm just asking. Do you have one later on?
There's another part to my report, it's short.
Okay, okay, thank you. I'll address that. She had that in her report. We, I pulled it out for it to be done separately, so I will thank her for providing this additional short report that she's going to. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a report on TSU's Research and Sponsored Programs. The Chair recognizes President Glover, who will provide information regarding this agenda item.
Thank you.
Can't take it anywhere.
Dr. Spencer Quick, who is Associate Vice President for Research and Sponsored Programs, will provide a, a short report.
Yeah.
I got the memo. So, good afternoon, Chair Cole, Members of the Board of Trustees, President Glover, Cabinet Members, Deans in attendance, faculty, staff, and students. I'm exuberantly excited and delighted to report to you today that the TSU faculty, staff, and students have outperformed again. We have reached a new high in research grant awards totaling $95,532,666.
I thought they heard it. We clapped it away. What's the number again?
I heard the 95.
In the interest of time. So this surpasses our previous high of $70.7 million in 2021, which represents an increase of 34%. This also represents a 200% increase over the last five years. So as a part of that new high, I also would like to acknowledge the Scholar of Research Achievement of Dr. John Ricketts in the College of Agriculture, who received an $18 million award from the USDA NIFA that contributed significantly to this great feat.
And that's the agri, dealing with agri business, wasn't it? The 18 million?
There were a bunch of diff, yeah, part of it. Yeah, there were a bunch of different. So I'd also like to mention a $3 million award that I procured from the National Institute of Structure and Technology that would be used towards the renovation of Haunted Hall, which houses approximately 13 research labs and two teaching labs in the College of Life and Physical Sciences. And this will be in support of our continued capital improvement efforts across the campus as we pursue our goal to achieve an R1 designation. As such, I am bullish on the future of the research enterprise at Tennessee State University, and have a strategic goal presented throughout the campus to reach a $150 million target within the next five years.
I thought you were going to say you were going to reach a hundred million.
I looked up under every desk, under every seat cushion. I couldn't find it. So to assist us in reaching this goal, we have acquired the services of Congressional Partners in Washington, DC. In closing, I would like to applaud our faculty again, our staff, our students, and also the team in Research and Sponsored Programs, specifically Doctors Phyllis Danner, Corinne Vaughn, Reggie Cannon, April Turner, Robert Turner, and Cheryl Washington, who do, who do a lot of the administrative work that helps us out in reaching these new highs, as well as fellow Cabinet Members, and last but certainly not least, President Glover. As you can only achieve these accomplishments with buy-in and engagement from everybody. I mean, everybody has to be bought in. And so from all stakeholders, I think I've been getting that. I appreciate that. VP Allen, Ms. Sharp, Dr. Johnson, everybody on board. So I thank, thanks. And that concludes my report.
The President's Report. The Chair recognizes President Glover, who will provide the report on this agenda item.
Thank you. Go through, go to the next one. So I want to start by saying, TSU is strong financially. Their financial position remains strong. We have an endowment of $97.6 million, it's more than double. We have reserves of $64 million, that's close to the highs we've ever had. We have assets of $401 million, that's our highest ever. The CFI is three, that's higher than the industry average. And so this is our best financial position ever. And we're continuing to work to eliminate any contrary perceptions pertaining to TSU University finances. So we are doing well financially. So let me just throw in some points of pride. We reached the historic high in research funding. It's really, it's 95 point something million. We couldn't count the other million and a half I was trying to put in there, but it won't, we haven't got it signed in yet, so until, until the sign is not there. So another point of pride is the LeVar Watkins, Dr. LeVar Watkins Institute, that's creating the pipeline for students. a pipeline for students to work here three years, be at school three years, and then go straight on to med school, to dental school. So, Ms. Barbara Merrell's in the back, and she has, so I'll stand on Ms. Merrell. Thank you. Ms. Merrell has that up. So, another point of pride is the Apple Technology, Apple National Technology Innovation Center. You know that Smart Center was, has been lauded, and it was part of the SAC COC commendation to us. The Grammy Award winning Aristocrat of Bands, we honored them already today. They performed at the White House and the CMA, that commission speaker of Oprah. So, those are my points of pride that we have.
Dr. Glover, would you, and thank you for allowing Mrs. Merrell to handle that, Levi Watkins Institute. But at the next meeting, would you please just include a picture in your report? They are fantastic in their white coats while they're at the program.
I may bring them.
Oh, well, okay. That would, well, at least bring a couple of some. And they, they look wonderful, they act wonderful, and thank you for allowing their program to come to fruition, and thank you, I always say Dean Merrell, for everything you've done in the program.
And we still call her Dean Merrell.
Yeah, yeah.
Because she was my dean of students when I was here. So, we have a strong student profile. It's been elevated. Our GPA for the most recent entering freshman classes, I was saying three-point-four, but we have, we don't round up, so it's three-point-nine-nine-nine. So, it's up from two-point-eight five years ago. So, housing, we've had enough on housing, I think we went over that, but just to let you, we'll go to the next one. So, we're on campus availability, we're at three-point, three-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty. House of God, a hundred-and-fifty more beds, there was some supplemental beds, a hundred and two. Then the hotels, so we counted four-hundred-and-thirty-six. So, we have a total of beds available, four-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-eight, so we should be fine for the fall. So, I've talked to about the reorganization, those changes already, and ask and recognize those new ones, new people that's come on board. So, we mentioned the salary increases. I go with what we're doing. Look at the bottom part first, for twenty-two, twenty-three, last year, the faculty and staff received a six percent increase effective July one, because of course, the government recommended two percent from this budget and four percent from the university budget. But TSU put another four percent to it to make it a six percent for the faculty. We raised the minimum wage from all TSU employees, the minimum salary, fifteen dollars an hour, thirty-one thousand-two-hundred for the year. That's our lowest, that's our minimum starting salary. So, this year, we were looking at five percent, but we managed to squeeze in another half percent, so we did five and a half percent effective in two weeks. And then we put together this assistant, this additional salary pool to assist faculty to engage in just some productivity work. And I want to thank, just thank Dr. Johnson, Bill Johnson, and thank Academic Affairs, Dr. Milton, for the role you played in our faculty senate chair, Dr. Young Ziegler, for just how you all worked to get this salary pool established. We really appreciate that. So, let's go back to the financial position. We've said a lot, but I do want to stress, our financial position of TSU remains strong. We have a healthy balance sheet. We have a high endowment to student ratio. TSU has never defaulted on any of our debt obligations, never been late on a debt payment. You know, some schools have to have their state appropriations intercepted to pay for debt, it's never happened at TSU. We've had an over one-hundred-and-twenty-five percent increase in our endowment over the previous eight to nine years, and our reserve position remains strong. A little bit more, as measured by the composite financial index, I mentioned we had three-point-four-two, exceeds industry standard of three-point-oh. So, reserve funds, we have, in our total university reserves, we have sixty-four million, the bottom line, one-hundred-ninety-two thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars. So, that makes for a good rainy day, sixty-four billion dollars. Now, I'm going to go back over to financial statement audits for last year, 2021, June third, twenty, well, two years ago now, but we came out in the fall of 2022, that we received a clean opinion, and all the prior audit findings have been corrected. But we're still working on the June thirty, twenty-two audit. I'm not quite sure where we are in that process, but I know we're probably about eighty percent or so done. And so, we just have a different management team now, with the five CPAs, including the Vice President and Controller. So, we put new policies in also to help to make sure that the recommendations are performed. So, audits, another statement of audits, the Controller, Officer of Control, conducted performance audit and issued a report. We just responded to that report. We did it, the Board at the last meeting, adopted a twelve-point resolution, and we just went through those, those aspects of that, how we respond to each part of it. So, then the last point is that we're going to, now we're undergoing a forensic audit. I believe it was the Chair of the Senate Ways and Means Committee requesting and received approval for a two-million dollars for forensic audit of TSU. So, we're going to start there. We believe it's supposed to commence in July, so we're not sure exactly when, but that's, that's the word we're getting. So, we can skip through all of that. All right, now, so endowment growth, we mentioned how endowment has grown to, I did from 2014 to now of ninety-seven-point-six million, endowment has increased fifty-four-point-seven million dollars, so that's quite a bit. And so, at one point, it reached, it reached a hundred million, but you know, then COVID contributors and other contributing factors, but you can see the balance of last May, we went through where it started two years ago, the new gifts that came in, the market loss in the missed loans income, which is really dividends, then add the new gifts, the market appreciation now is because of ninety-seven-point-six million. And that's put together, if you look at the reserves and endowment, you can see how long the students get to, works on endowment, raise the students, reserves, because how we're going to have, run the university in times of crises. So, if you look at those two together, at twenty, for 2022, we don't have twenty-two, three numbers yet, one-hundred-and-sixty-one million, eight-hundred thousand, that's a healthy sum for reserves and endowment. So, I keep, want to stress the point and make that public know that TSU is doing fine financially, but we still need our funding. We're not about to close because of money. Infrastructure, we've gone over that before, that we have gotten the twenty-fifty million dollars from the, from the General Assembly last year. We continue to applaud Governor Lee for making TSU a priority in his budget last year, and we always announce how much we appreciate that in the General Assembly for, for standing up for that budget and getting it through. Grant's Research, you just went over there, we're going to skip that. So, we're to end of it now. So, we just, our two charts with our historic commencement speakers, if you can see, 2022, we had the Vice President of the United States, Kamala Harris. 2023, we had our own Oprah Winfrey. So, we're just really pleased, the students are pleased about the commencement speakers last year and this year. And finally, the Aristocrat of Bands, those historic performances, they just did the White House, CMA, the Grammys, so we're just really proud of our Grammy Award-winning White House performing Aristocrat of Bands. And I think that's it. Thank you.
No, thank you for your, is there any additional business?
I have comments, if I may. President Glover and the Board, thank you so much for recognizing the value and importance of the activities of the faculty and staff on campus with a five-point-five percent across the board raise. And thank you from the faculty for your dedication and commitment towards moving us towards, towards R1 with your academic performance incentive pay program. We are thrilled about these opportunities, and we are thrilled of your support. So, thank you very much.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. That ends my report.
This is yours. So, everybody's happy.
Okay. Everyone should be happy, faculty, student, staff and alumni, even detractors should be happy with this meeting, okay? At this point, I will entertain your motion to adjourn the meeting.
Shall move.
Second. Second.
Second.
Okay. I move the meeting adjourned, okay? No, I'm sorry, call roll, second penalty. Please, I want to get this legal.
Chair Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Curbill.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Before we close, I just wanted to say that we're so pleased that this is one of the first times I can remember that everybody is happy in the TSU family, the faculty, the staff, the students, alumni, everybody appears, we don't get the complaints, and everybody's just happy now. So, it's a good moment for TSU history. Thank you.
There was no provision for a chair's report, but I don't have any other than thank you. Okay, so, we're finished.